Good morning. We're going to call the March 24th meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors to order. We begin this morning with a flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Anne, please read the statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday, March 24th, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Anne. We will move on to the consent agenda. Any items on consent that any member of the board wished to have removed for discussion?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, any member of the public wished to have any item removed from consent for discussion? All right, we'll entertain a motion on consent.
Second.
Motion, Duran, second. Holmes, roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Thank you very much. We move on to public comment. This is the time when any member of the public can address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on items raised in public comment. Please, as you step forward, identify yourself and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anybody have anything they'd like to address the board on public comment? Okay, seeing none. Oh, you want to wait? Supervisor Holmes, is that your concern? There might be somebody up in Tahoe that... That's... I was going to say it's not my good side, but then again, if you don't have one, it's hard to... Make sure there's nobody up in Tahoe that's there for public comment. The old empty chair. Okay, well, I guess that means there's nobody up in Tahoe, although the microphone is off. There might be somebody shouting at us. Wait, it's my turn. Okay, well, we... Our next item is actually a 9:05 timed item. We are about two minutes early, but since this is not an action item, it's just an information item, I don't think that there's any real harm in us probably taking this item a couple moments early. Do you, county council, see any harm in it?
No.
No, thank you very much.
Just kidding.
Oh, Supervisor Committee reports down the... Thank you. Didn't see that jumping out at me down the bottom. Any supervisors have anything they wish to report? And we do have a couple of minutes to burn, so Jim, go ahead, feel free.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to inform the board that last week, yeah, last week I attended the ribbon... or the groundbreaking ceremony for the Quartz Ridge Affordable Housing Project, formerly known as Silver Bend, that's been on the books since before I took office. And it was nice to finally see some action taken and moving forward with that project. They will build 64 units of affordable housing. They hope to be open by spring of 2016, and they're already taking names for possible tenants. So anyhow, it's nice that, actually after 12 years or whatever how long it was, finally see something, some dirt being shifted around. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery?
I just wanted to let the board know that I will be attending the TRPA governing board meetings for the next two days. Larry Severson is out of town, and as his alternate, I will be up in Tahoe. I will give you a full report at our next board meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And seeing no other supervisor updates, that does bring us to 9:05, just in time for our Caltrans Raise AD Project. DeeDee, are you going to make an introduction on this, or would you... Well, that's what my agenda's telling me, and I always do what the quirk of the board tells me to do as the chairman.
Well, I'll be Semper Gumbi this morning. I'm happy to introduce Liza Whitmore from Caltrans, Public Information Officer, to give us an update on what's going on with the construction along I-80.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. As she said, I'm Liza Whitmore. I am the Public Information Officer for Caltrans District III. Office is up in Maryville, Marysville. And I am responsible for the Sierra area, which is Placer County, north of Roseville, Rockland, Allin Nevada County, and Sierra County. So, one of my projects that I have that I'm responsible for getting the public's information out is the Raise AD Project, which you all know. And then I wasn't sure who I signal for moving slides.
The... Yeah, that's it right there, yep.
Be back?
Probably that one. There you go.
Nope, that's bad.
I don't know which button. Fortunately, I've never had to use the thing.
That trust us went backwards.
That goes backwards.
That's weird.
Okay.
Guy next door, TV keeps going on and off. Up!
So, we will have a presentation. Hello, I'm Liza Whitmore, small business, the Public Information Officer, and we'll just get all the information, but perhaps not in the right order. Actually, this is fine. Project details. The... It's a $36 million project. And how many of you have seen or driven by... You've all driven under it. Have any of you actually come out when the lift is going on? Yeah, it's pretty amazing, it isn't it? So, anyway, nine over crossings from Maghra to Loomis. We are raising the vertical clearance to the federally required 16 feet six inches. We are planning on raising six and digging down for three. There's one that might end up being a down and an up, but they're currently working on that. So, we shall see how that works. And of course, why? I think you've all heard the presentation. When we first started doing the project, you're familiar with why we need to be able to have the opportunity for the larger trucks and whatever national security kinds of things. They said that, and it was kind of like, okay. And basically, one of the big things is, is to keep the oversized loads off of your local roads, because if they couldn't get under those built in 1950-something overpasses, then they had to come out onto the streets that were perpendicular to I-80, which was not good for any of our... any of the residents. Reduces the wear and tear on local roads, definitely safety and all of that. Thought this was so interesting. $4.7 million per hour, per day of goods goes up and down I-80. And people ask me where they got that number, and I don't know, but I will trust it, because literally, if you think about how many trucks and so on go up and down 80, and all of them are carrying a substantial amount of goods, particularly with the Port of Sacramento and so on, and Port of Oakland, and things are going up and over to the rest of the country, they're going to come through our area. So, this is a picture of the Penrend Overcrossing Lift. We have completed four. So, Gallardi was our latest one there on March 5th. In front of you, you have a flyer about Raise AD with the little thing that the Horseshoe Bar Lift is next. That is going to be closing on April 12th. It'll be closed until April 29th. They're hoping that they might be able to reopen it a couple of days earlier, but the contractor wanted a few extra days wiggle room, so we're saying 12th to the 29th. And the lift itself is going to be the night of the 14th and 15th of April. So, that's when they'll actually be lifting it. The Weimar Cross Road is going to be in May. King Road will be in June, and then we stop for summer traffic and all of that, and then we'll restart again in September to do the Union Pacific and the Newcastle Road Overcrossing.
Lisa, is Newcastle one of the up and down one you're talking about?
Newcastle was actually, I think, going to be both dig, and I think that's the one that they're trying to figure out whether or not it will both go up and down.
Okay, good.
You have your regular detour that we've had for all the rest of the over crossings. So, that will put everybody out on Taylor Road and one coming back in on 193 and Sierra College Boulevard. It seems to be doing pretty well. Horseshoe Bar is actually going to have both on-ramps open, because the distance from the... where the on-ramps come on to the bridge is fairly significant, so they can leave those on. From the freeway, those off-ramps will be closed. But the on-ramp, so that is going to be able to allow people to at least be able to get up to Horseshoe Bar, whether they have to go eastbound and turn around at Noon Castle, or westbound and come down and turn around. So, it'll be a little bit easier for the residents, which will be nice, as well as the businesses, because then the people can come in on that northbound side and still be able to have easy access to the freeway. The traffic impacts, of course, is the alternate routes through the city and the county. We encourage in putting information out through social media and so on to have people allow for a little bit of extra time. As you already know from the previous ones, I-80 itself will close from 11:00 PM until 5:00 AM on the nights of the 14th and 15th for Horseshoe Bar and whatever other nights we have for the future projects. They said 17 to 22 days. I was looking back in the old, like, two, three years ago, when they were predicting that there was going to be over crossings would be closed for two to three months. So, I'm sure that everybody is very happy that we've significantly reduced that timeframe. We're looking... Working with first responders, particularly because the fire station is right there on the other side of Horseshoe Bar, as well as the police station and so on. So, we're working with them to be able to make sure that there's an opportunity for planning ahead and so on, and being able to get services in an immediate need. Our outreach efforts, this is the big thing. Caltrans has learned over the years that if we inform people in advance of what's going on, for example, when they did the boat section in I-5, we're talking I-5 directly through downtown Sacramento, and we had to end up completely shutting down I-5 in each direction alternately. And of course, you know, I think LA had one Carmageddon kind of a thing. Well, it didn't have that big of an impact, because the word out early of what was going to be happening, when it was going to be happening, put out the information about the detours, how you could utilize other modes of transportation and so on. And I think this has happened very well for the Raise AD Project as well. As you can see, we have 800 Facebook followers. I have 189 people twittering all the time. Never learned how to Twitter until this job, so now I'm pretty good at it. And we have nearly 800 eBlast subscribers, and we have people on text, and of course, all of our media partners were getting the word out. So, it's really nice to be able to utilize that wonderful social media. This is something that we are putting forward. We have 13 businesses that have signed up. If you go on the Raise AD website, you can actually see them, and underneath it might have a, you know, come and CS for 5% off, or get a free ice cream with, or something like that. So, businesses are taking advantage of this, and we expect that there's going to be a few more in the Horseshoe Bar area that are also going to take advantage of being able to tell people that they are indeed open for business. So, you can see a little bit on that picture. Those of you that have been down to see the lifts, if you haven't, I encourage you to come out to the Horseshoe Bar one. It really is amazing. They chip away all of the concrete, and the rebar is right there, and you can see how it's just sliced. And then you see it in that picture, which you can't really see very well, slowly goes further and further and further apart. And the ability of the bridge engineers and the contractor to be able to lift every single little piece of that bridge, because it can't go like this, and it can't go like that, and, you know, everything has to be lifted, and they have a kind of an air horn kind of a thing. You can hear them calling out, "One inch, half an inch, quarter inch," that kind of a thing. So, it's really quite exciting. So, anyway, we're on schedule and on budget, and we have lifted 73 and 1/4 inches, according to the program manager. And we're successfully rerouting traffic. As far as I know, there haven't been any accidents. We did have a deer. It was killed, unfortunately. But other than that, we're... Communication with the safety personnel seems to be resulting in a lot of minimal complaints and minimizing the impacts. Once the overcrossing gets back open, we've had some difficulty in communicating to folks that there will be one lane closures sometimes. But it should never last more than five to 15 minutes, just so that they have the K-rail out there so that they can work on the sidewalks. The bridge railings are going to be very similar to the bridge railing that's across Sierra College Boulevard. So, it'll look really nice. So, we're looking forward to that. So, again, this is how we spread the word. In front of you, you have your Raise AD little flyers. I will be going out next week with the actual Horseshoe Bar lift dates and closure dates, and so I'll be hitting all of the businesses and so on in the Loomis area to be able to let them know that they're going to be... Actually have a date. So, any questions from anybody?
Supervisor Duran, your lights on?
I get some real colorful calls, black helicopters, Agenda 21, that kind of stuff. This is being driven by the Federal Highway Administration.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
16 feet six.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yes, thank you. And I had the great pleasure of being an unwitting participant in the Maghra Road Lift project. You and I spoke, I think, last week, and thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Sure.
I did pass along to the constituents what was going to happen on the actual overcrossing itself in terms of sidewalks and railing and all of that, and they were very pleased. One thing I did want to find out, it's not specific to Raise AD, but we had also talked about the project from Colfax up to Maghra that's going to be a widening of Interstate 80.
We're calling it the Truck Climbing Lane.
The Truck Climbing Lane, exactly. Can you just give us a little bit more information about what the timing is expected to be on that, and where that would begin and where that would end?
And I don't have the really specifics on it, but I did, after our conversation, go talk to the gentleman who's the program manager and got a little bit of information from him. It's still really early, because they're looking at 2016 is when that project is actually going to be taking place. And from what I got from him was that it is going to be from, like we said, for all the way up Maghra. The detour apparently that they had for the Maghra Road overcrossing is going to be the same one for that.
So, truck.
Only going to be three nights, and it will be from 11:00 to 5:00, 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM only.
Okay.
And it'll be three nights, and then he said something like three or four times throughout the life of the project. So... And then he also mentioned something yesterday that the trucks would have a detour that the autos didn't. Did they do that for the Maghra?
Yeah, so normally what happens when they work on that section of the freeway is they detour the trucks up 49 through Grass Valley in Nevada City, and then up 20 vehicles go by Rollins Lake. So, passenger vehicles have a little bit easier route.
Okay.
You know, my concern is just the blasting, and there are some neighborhoods that are fairly close to the area, so I would love it if you could ask the project manager to get ahold of me. We'd... I'm sorry, I have a pinched nerve in my neck. I'm not grimacing at the job.
Yeah.
I would love it if the program manager could come out, project manager could come out and give some information to our local municipal advisory council.
We'd be more than happy to, yeah. If not the program manager, I'll get updated on it. We're going to be having a meeting, I think, next week.
Marvelous.
And be able to get out there. And you mentioned those little meetings up in Colfax, little coffees and things like that, yeah. Be more than happy to come out and get everybody educated.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding the Newcastle overcrossing, the negotiations with Union Pacific, is there any problem with Union Pacific as you move forward?
As far as I know, it's moving along fine.
And do you need right-of-way, or why is Union Pacific just because we're...
I'm not exactly that familiar with the... how the train tracks interrelate with the vehicle overcrossing, but I would be more than happy to get you some information in being able to do that. I think they were, you know, again, it's not happening until September, and it's fluid at this point, from what I understand.
Could you give me the contact of who in Caltrans is in meeting with Union Pacific or negotiating with their liaison with Union Pacific?
I could easily, yeah.
There's another... There's a fire district down there that's having some issues with... They need some right-of-way from Union Pacific, and I just need to work that element. So, if you could give me the...
If we're already working with them, it would make sense to work with that same person, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah. I can leave my business cards
All right.
with here, and that would be information.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Any of the board members have any other questions or comments? So, my only comment/observation is I'm assuming it's called Raise AD because raise the overpasses across Interstate 80 doesn't fit as well in a flyer. So, we're not actually raising AD, we're raising... Just me and my semantics.
We'll take that advice. Or actually lower.
Lowering, exactly, exactly. All right, well, with that, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
We do have a few minutes, and no department head items, so we're going to have county council take us in to chip through some of our closed session items, and we'll come back for our 9:30 timed item on Health and Human Services.
All right.
So...
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the existing litigation items listed on the agenda. County of Placer versus Bender, County of Placer versus Martha Romero, and Pro Century Insurance Company versus Romero, the Verizon cases, and one workers' compensation case. workers' compensation case.
real property negotiators discussing four different properties. The Board heard reports on those properties and gave direction to its real property negotiators.
Okay, thank you. Our 10 o'clock timed item is the SEDRA item. This is the Riola Vineyards Specific Plan Amendments, the Specific Plan and Land Use Development Standards and Development Agreement Rezone. Michael Johnson is presenting along with Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Your Board first heard this item at your February 24th meeting. At that meeting, staff presented the land use plan and the proposed amendments to the specific plan. At today's meeting, this analysis will focus on the fiscal financial studies that have been prepared for the project. Michelle Kingsbury will be making the presentation.
Good morning. Michelle Kingsbury, Senior Planner with SEDRA. And behind me is Lisa Carnehan, our Lead Project Planner for the Riola Vineyards Specific Plan Amendment Project. As Michael mentioned, Lisa was here on February 24th providing you an overview of the proposed specific plan amendment for Riola Vineyards.
Would you try to speak up just a touch, please?
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. To briefly summarize what Lisa presented to you in February and what's also included in your Board package, a copy of the report that she presented, we'll go quickly through that and then jump right in to the fiscal finance and development agreement update. As you're aware, Riola Vineyards is located in West Placer, adjacent to the Placer Vineyards Specific Plan Amendment which you heard back in January. Riola Vineyards calls for approximately 933 maximum residential units, 10.7 acres of maximum commercial development located in the Dry Creek Community Plan. Key changes to the land use proposal that Lisa presented included the reevaluation of the rural residential, removal of the alley-loaded units, replacing the high-density that was located on the corner due to the affordable housing agreement with Acres of Hope to commercial development, introduction of estate lots, as well as removal of the arterial parallel to PFE Road, creation of two distinct neighborhoods connected by the bike and pedestrian path, and removal of the connection to Watt Avenue. The more detailed analysis of those proposed changes is included in as the attachment in your package as well and as presented by Lisa back in February. At the February 24th, excuse me, hearing, there was public comment that was received from the Friswold Property Owner Representative. Subsequent to that meeting, staff did meet with the representative to try and work out what the issues were included in your package as an exhibit is what we call an errata to the specific plan, which is based upon the applicant trying to work out the roadway issues specifically. The applicant has agreed to move this roadway and... The applicant has agreed to move this roadway and, excuse me, I might just jump up. It might be easier to stand. Sorry. The applicant has agreed to remove this roadway and that roadway up there entirely along the applicant's property. Previously in the prior slide, you can see that it bisects both property lines. So the applicant has agreed to move that roadway entirely on their property to mitigate those issues. Other issues such as sound walls and things like that, as we proceed forward through the entitlement phase and improvements and tentative maps, those would be the more applicable times at that definition as we further define the project. We can try and work out those issues with the non-participating owner, the Friswolds. But it'd be part of that process as we go forward through subsequent tentative maps, improvement plans, et cetera. As we jump into the analysis that was performed from both a public facility included within your finance plan, those types of capital expenditures and fiscal plan, I'll briefly summarize those details. But more included in your package was the public facility finance plan update that was repaired by EPS, along with what we call an errata sheet, which were some technical changes that we included within there. If your Board searches to approve this amendment, those technical errata sheets would be incorporated within the final production copy of the finance plan. But to briefly summarize, catch up with me. What we did is we mirrored the assumptions and analysis that was performed with Placer Vineyards that was approved back in January and mirrored that along with Riola Vineyards. Staff is certainly supportive of that as the projects are adjacent to each other, located within the same community plan and share some of those cost burdens for regional facilities such as your Sheriff's Service Center, et cetera. So we updated the finance plan to reflect those changes that were approved by Placer Vineyards. In addition to that, the developer would mirror what was approved at Placer Vineyards, that they would pay a fee program, the capital facility fee, and some supplemental facility fees that would go toward transit and sheriff centers as well. For the fiscal plan, again, we incorporated similar methodology and assumptions that were included within the Placer Vineyards plan and as detailed when we came to the Board in April of 2014, where we looked at what the countywide assumptions were and how we would apply those toward these fiscal plans. The result and impact was to arrive at an estimate of the overall service cost of about $857 per unit, which included both countywide costs and urban service costs. We worked with all the various departments to look at ways to find efficiencies and eliminate redundancies similar to what we did with Placer Vineyards to arrive at that cost. The cost is portioned out. We have your park site of it, which we looked toward establishing a separate Park Services CFD and also a countywide services CFD. We ran the estimated cost based upon 884 units, which is a conservative estimate because we weren't quite sure if the density reserve, their 47 density reserve units, if those would be used or not within the plan. We also ran a sensitivity test, assuming that the full build-out of the 933 units to make sure that that $857 per unit was covered both if we did 884 units or 933 units. And that sensitivity test proved that yes, we were covered. There's a slight buffer at the 933-unit build-out that was incorporated within the proposal that we were supportive of as well. The types of fee programs that Riola Vineyards is looking toward establishing are very similar to what we did with Placer Vineyards. We're looking for establishing a Park Services CFD, a Countywide Services CFD that would memorialize those per-unit annual cost estimates. If so approved today with the specific plan, we would go back and look at establishing those CFDs. The information reports that would be generated would be subject to our bond screening committee rules as well as subsequent action for your Board to establish those service districts. The other types of fee programs that are more specifically defined within your package include the RVSP fee program, which looks at components, excuse me, that's three components. For the infrastructure fee, that would be a fee established to recover the burden of the backbone infrastructure costs, as well as the supplemental facility fee, which mirrors what Placer Vineyards has as well for both the transit and sheriff center costs and the regional park services fee. Other types of fees, and there's an error here. It says Tier 2. It was an old slide and trying to update it carried over an error. That's supposed to say they're subject to, as delineated in your DA, the Riago Road interchange fee. They'll be incorporated within the countywide fire capital facility fee, as well as other applicable countywide fee programs that this development would be subject to. And before I get to the recommended actions, we did receive correspondence today from the Friswold Property Owner Representative to briefly go through those items. They referenced the revised errata exhibit for the vehicular circulation, which evidenced that the developer was proposing to move the roadways off from bifurcating both properties to entirely along theirs. In addition, questions were arisen of how those types of fee programs apportion the costs. And we have EPS here, Jamie Gomes, who was the one that prepared that report as well, in case there's specific questions about that. But to summarize, when we looked at our infrastructure fee burden analysis, we very conservatively used that 884 units and apportioned those cost estimates across those 884 units. Certainly, as we come back to the Board for the establishment of the RVSP fee program, if there's more further cost estimates that refine it down, or if we know that some of the density reserve units are going to be utilized, we can apportion those costs as the more knowledge is received, that we can apportion those costs across potentially a greater number of units to try and lower that fee burden. However, the fee burden analysis does indicate that the costs are within reason, within industry standards, and certainly comparable to what we've done with Placer Vineyards. In addition, the correspondence that we received today brought up the specific plan fee. There's a placeholder in your package with the finance plan that noted the specific plan fee of about $1 million. Again, that's a placeholder. What that type of fee is, and it's pretty standard, we've included it within the Placer Vineyards agreement as well, is for the applicant to recoup some of the costs that they fronted for the specific plan amendment, environmental document review, et cetera. And it's also something that we want to put in Placer Vineyards to, for those non-participating owners that do receive benefit from the front-loaded costs that the applicant has put forward, that they have an ability to recoup that. And again, it is placeholder language as we further refine those costs and establish the fee program. I think with that, we'll go forward with our recommended actions today. There's several of them, and certainly we'd ask the Board to take each action individually. But the first one would be adopting the resolution approving the addendum to the certified EIR and mitigation monitoring program. We'd look for adopting a resolution approving the amendments to the Riola Vineyards Specific Plan, in addition to incorporating the errata with the vehicular circulation exhibit that was included as an attachment. We'd look forward to adopting an ordinance approving the rezone of the 322.8 acres of the total amount of the specific plan area, adopting an ordinance approving amendments to the specific plan development standards, adopting a resolution approving amendments to the design guidelines, as well as adopting the ordinance approving the amended and restated development agreement, which is included in your package. And to note, the applicant has signed that development agreement as well, and they've agreed to the provisions that are included within that. And lastly, we'd look for the Board considering and accepting the finance plan, including the errata, which had the technical changes associated with those types of actions. And myself, as well as Lisa Carnahan and the applicant and its consultants are certainly available if there's more specific questions that you have.
Okay. Board members have questions? Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the slide that talked about the fees, and I'd like to have our CFO come up and talk about his comfort level for how we calculated the fees and where we are and what its effect is going to be. And we did this same thing with Placer Vineyards. I just wanted to make sure that, you know...
These fee structures were put together similar to the Placer Vineyards Specific Plan fee structures that was approved by your Board recently, and consistent with the direction that was provided by your Board in December of 2013. All of the fee programs have been updated accordingly for the Riola Vineyards Specific Plan. Couple of things to point out, as Michelle did mention, there is kind of a built-in buffer where we're looking at the development of a specific number of units and calculations of these fees as opposed to the high-density units that ultimately could come in, which would be in addition to that. Another thing that I just wanted to mention to your Board is that there's a small amount of outside sales tax. It's assumed to be captured as part of the revenue side of the equation for Riola Vineyards Specific Plan. And ultimately, at some point in time, we're going to need to really continue to carefully analyze the regional sales tax demand that's attributed to specific developments like Placer Vineyards, like Riola Vineyards, and any future developments that come down the pipe, to prevent the over-reliance on outside sales tax capture. Because the pie is only so big, and the more we understand about how big that pie is, we'll be able to really allocate that sales tax capture that's attributed to specific developments into the revenue side of the equation.
Thanks, Andy. And with regards to the Friswold matter, what steps do you foresee in the future to get the remaining issues resolved?
Thank you. Certainly, as we proceed forward with implementing the specific plan document, there'll be opportunities for the Friswold property owners to engage in the discussion, you know, as we go to tentative map stage, improvement plan stage, if there's issues regarding sound walls, et cetera. You know, there's opportunity to engage each other and work those issues out. And as well as addressing the correspondence received today, we'll be coming back with the establishment of the RVSP fee program. There's opportunities to engage in discussion and better understand how those costs are apportioned. So, long story short, there still are multiple steps in the process.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Mr. Friswold, Townhomes, and I get a sense that you're going to be able to work this out. But if there's any, if you need my assistance at all, feel free at any time to give me a call. I do want to say I appreciate staff's response to the Board's request to move forward and look at different things and the way we fund things in a different light. I think there's a clear sharing of the risk here moving forward, and I appreciate the work that you've done. I know the Town has done a tremendous job working with the local community. I see Dave at the MAC meetings, and he's got a really good relationship with the folks out there. And I think we've made a lot of progress on this project, and I appreciate the work you've done on it, especially the piece where you moved your low-density to Acres of Hope. That was a real plus that I'd like to see more of, as a matter of fact. Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions also relating to fees and some of the CFDs. Since we last had this kind of general conversation, a number of things have, maybe not going to say changed, but have become more clear at the county. And I'm thinking specifically about the countywide fire facility fee. I think we're all aware that Cal Fire, who provides our service for Placer County Fire, I think has probably met with all of us. I know they've talked to me about their concerns about a shortfall in funding to provide services. What would be the entity that would be providing fire services to Riola Vineyards in this case? Would it be Placer County Fire, Roseville Fire, some different entity?
It's my understanding, working with John McElhoun Downey at OES, his numbers are based upon, on the operational side, working with Cal Fire. They've been at the table with us and participated in some of the conversations that we've had. In terms of the capital facility fee, that's more the capital side of it, the building side of it. That would be something that we would ultimately look toward probably constructing there. But Cal Fire has been at the table with us.
Okay. Yeah, and my concern really is this Cal Fire's perspective on the Placer County Fire side is that, you know, they're potentially looking at closing stations and reducing staffing. And I'm very concerned that we don't do anything that compounds those problems, and that we really do make sure that we are not only covering all costs now, but into the future with some sort of escalation in there. And so I just want to be very, very mindful that that's part of what we do. It also relates frankly to the conversations we've been having about library services in Placer County. And my question is, is if there are some sort of facility service districts that are coming forward, or community facility districts that are coming forward, if they aren't successful and they don't come forward, what happens to those pieces of infrastructure like libraries and things that are proposed for the area? Do we end up funding those, or do they just end up not getting built?
It's a good question. I mean, if the project is approved today, we proceed forward to, you know, parcel J, which we call Mariposa, is in. We'd proceed forward to immediately try establishing the service CFDs, which would be brought forward through the bond screening committee.
I'm sure you can speak up.
Sorry. And ultimately, back to the Board. Included within those costs are allocations toward operations of library and fire. But once we establish the rate and methods and apportionment of those costs, they have automatic escalators every year in them. But ultimately, based upon funding that comes in and services needed, you know, you adjust based upon the funding that you have. We've assumed a full build-out and what it would cost based upon the budgets that we know today, and apportion those costs accordingly to the development.
Yeah, you know, I just have a little bit of angst about the idea that we'll be constructing potentially new facilities and find ourselves 10 years from now in the same situation we find ourselves in now, which is, oh, we've got it. How do we pay for it? And so, Andy, are you comfortable with what's being proposed in terms of those sorts of county facilities? Help me with this, Andy.
Insistent with the Board's direction on how facilities are to be built with the new developments and the funding mechanisms that go with those, if everything pans out the way it's planned out in the fiscal plan, I'm comfortable with it, I guess.
And have we had any experience, Michael, with community facility districts or other, you know, CSDs or anything along those lines, that we had an expectation that would come forward that ended up not, where we had to take the burden on ourselves?
I am not aware of any specific circumstances where it didn't build out as anticipated, nor am I aware of any CFDs that have failed or disbanded within the county's jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you. That gives me a greater level of comfort.
If I can add a comment, you know, one of the things, Jen, that we've talked about out in the west side, because it's so close to a populated area, is doing some type of a multi-jurisdictional library. And because, you know, the city's going through its own issues with its library system as well. And I know that I've talked to Mary George about that. And the city, I've heard, you know, is receptive to at least the concept, at least having, you know, 30,000-foot discussions about doing something out there because of the exact issue we're talking about.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments from Board members, this is a continuation of the public hearing that we opened on February 24th. So at this time, I'd invite any members of the public that have anything they would like to say to address the Board at this
Good morning, members of the Board. Bridgette Barnes, 3262 Penrin Road. I'm here on behalf of Marion Friswold and her brother, Russ Corallo, is here. The staff accurately recited both what our original concerns were before the finance plan came through, and that, as you can see from my letter, that agreements have been reached relative to the location of what I was calling the internal roadway between the homes-by-town parcel and the Friswold parcel, much through Supervisor Duran's assistance and his staff and your internal staff, and that the other two items, we look forward to working out as the formal plans are resolved, so that we can get rights away resolved. The other issues that I brought up relative to the finance plan, and I realize that this is coming at everybody quickly, because much of the finance plan design and structure wasn't even completed by EPS until around the 13th or 14th of March, and then it's all coming in for a public draft. But the point to try and simplify is that, to the extent that total fees work out on, I'm using MDR as an example, because that's the proposed zoning for the purposes of the Friswold property down the road, works out to $70,000 per unit. As we understand the plans, as my discussion with EPS last night indicated, that is assuming... plans, as my discussion with EPS last night indicated, that is assuming 120 units approved, and the costs are, they're allocated against using a divisor of 120 for the totals. The accurate anticipation for the property would be around 60 or 70 units max, allowing for everything that happens on a given parcel when it's developed. If the total cost then is being divided that way, that would raise it up to about 110. I see that various of these costs are supposed to be paid through and at the time of building permit, which would tend to indicate that those numbers would go down. But at this early stage, there's no allocation here that makes that clear. That's what my concern is, is that lots that are supposed to be sold for homes that are going to be MDR immediately near the county line makes it unmarketable in that kind of a structure. That was what I was trying to express in that paragraph, and that's my concern. You see that all the time with the parcels, that at this stage, everybody thinks it's all going to go forward, it's going to be great, the market doesn't support it, and now you have a whole bunch of stuff not built. That was my concern. The total costs and fees out there are very high. That's not questioning the validity of the services that are being provided, it's a comparison with what's going on in Sacramento right now, which is right across the border. And that the final point is, a point of history, just to keep the record clear, because we did have an agreement in 2009, that the types of fees, right now it's called the $1 million placeholder on that map, would be revisited and audited when the time came. Just for those of you who were not on the board at that time, there was $850,000 in JTS's attorney's fees that had been lumped in with no allocation for those fees as what was benefiting JTS specifically and the overall development. And that was the purpose of our objection then, and that's what I'm trying to just keep in the record, so that when these numbers get flushed out, we have some kind of equitable adjustment. But I want to thank you again for hearing us on this, and as I said, my client is just concerned about how this divisor is going to apply when the time comes for the payment of fees on his or her map, depending on who owns it at the time. Thank you. Here to answer any questions if I was confusing.
I don't see any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to address? Mr. Cook, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Neeler, members of the board, Dave Cook, RCH Group here on behalf of Homes by Town, HBT of Riola Vineyards LLC. Town purchased this property from JTS back in December 2009, it's been a long road. We've taken our time, we've made some pretty good progress, and really, I'm just here to thank you for your consideration and hopefully for your approval of these modifications. I want to thank staff, in particular Andy and Michelle, but Lisa and Michael, the rest of his team, as well as all the other departments, because like a lot of remodel jobs, sometimes the second time around is a little bit more difficult than the first time around, and there's been a great deal of effort put forth, but Town is very satisfied with where we are. There are some numbers that still need to be fine-tuned, and as we move into the tentative map stage and further detailed engineering, some of these costs that Bridget's concerned about will go down, but I also want to encourage her and her client to engage. Her estimate of 60 units to 70 units is just one approach, it depends on the product they determine they want to put on there. In fact, that parcel is allocated 120 lots, and 120 lots could fit. It's all a matter of them determining what they want to do and when they want to move forward on that. So with that, again, I want to thank staff for all their hard work, and we appreciate the board's consideration today.
Any other members of the public have any questions or comments? Okay, we'll close public hearing, bring it back to the board. We're being asked to take a number of different items, I would defer to counsel, is your preference on individual motions on the six different items in front of us, or one motion inclusive? What's your preference?
I prefer individual motions on the items.
Okay. So first, we're being asked to adopt a resolution approving an addendum to the Certified Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Final Environmental Impact Report and Amendments to the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. Do we have a motion?
And, Mr. Chair, that would include the findings included in the staff report?
Absolutely, the findings are included. So that was a motion by Duran, second by Holmes, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. Secondly, we're being asked to adopt a resolution approving the amendments to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan with changes noted on the errata sheet. Motion Duran, second, Holmes, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none, thank you. Third, adopt an ordinance approving a rezone of 322.8 acres of the 525 total acres for the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. Motion Duran, second, Holmes, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none, thank you. And we're being asked to adopt an ordinance approving amendments to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Development Standards. Motion Duran, second, Holmes, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you. Fifth, adopt a resolution approving amendments to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Design Guidelines. Motion Duran, second, Holmes, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none. And finally, adopt an ordinance approving amended and restated development agreement for the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. Motion Duran, second, Holmes, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none, thank you. That concludes the publicly-agendized items for the Board of Supervisors. I believe we still have a closed session item or two, or we don't?
No, we're done.
We did, we finished closed session as well. Well, that concludes the items for the Board of Supervisors for March 24th, and we're adjourned.